Four, three, two, and go.
Good evening, and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting for our October meeting. We will move into our meeting agenda, and I will call this meeting to order. And before we move into roll call, we'll have our prayer tonight by Chaplain Bill Hunter, who's with our Smyrna Police Department. And our pledge will be done by Chief Kevin Arnold with the Police Department. If everyone will please stand.
Will you bow with me, please? Almighty God, we come thanking you for this day, this occasion. I thank you for this council, for our mayor, our vice mayor, and all those that serve. We're blessed in Smyrna to have men and women who love our city, and who love our people, and who strive hard to provide for us. We know they sacrifice their time from their families, and we just pray that you'll be with their families and strengthen them as well. Lord, I want to thank you for all of the employees of the town of Smyrna. I thank you for those that serve on the Police Department, those that serve on the Fire Department, and all the various departments throughout the city. Chief Arnold's with us tonight, and I'm thankful for him and for his leadership and guidance. I pray you'll be with him and his family as they continue to serve here. Go with us and help us to rectify any wrongs in our life, forgive us of any sins, in Christ's name, and amen.
Everyone, please join me in the pledge. Our pledge is to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thanks, Chaplain and Chief. Ms. Diane, if you will do, roll call, please.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morell.
Here.
Councilwoman Peebles.
Here.
Councilman Short.
For Councilman.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
We will move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the meetings' minutes of the September 10th, 2019, and September 23rd, 2019, and September 26th, 2019 meetings. Jeff, are these in order?
They're ordered, ma'am.
Are there any additions or corrections that need to be made to any of the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, minutes pass. Brian, any correspondence or communications tonight?
Let's see.
Okay, awards and recognitions?
Yes, we do have an award that needs to be presented.
You want me to take that?
Sure.
Karen Smith is in the audience, and Karen is a photographer. Karen's also a member at LifePoint Church where I attend. And Karen had called me a couple of weeks back and asked me if she could have an opportunity to come in and present something to the council. So I had her call Diane and set that up. So Karen, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've been involved with this town for a long time, and a chain of events that has taken place to get to where we're at today, and it has to do with the Blue Angels. It all started with Ron Allen, Susan Golly, with Carpe Artista. And she had introduced me to Amanda Johnston, who in turn introduced me to Bill, I can't remember his name now, John Black, at the airport. And we started shooting the Blue Angels when they came to town. Well, the past couple of years, we've been involved, and we're now working with them on their team. So with that being said, we had the opportunity to take photographs, and we would like to -- my husband Danny couldn't be here tonight, he had to work, so we want to present to you, Mayor, if you want to come down, and the rest of the council, if you all want to, that's fine. I have a picture here for you of you all with the Blue Angels, and I'll let you see it before I say anything else.
Great.
So it was autographed from all the piles. That is really cool.
And I'll go back upstairs to talk, so the viewing audience can hear.
But I wanted to do that for you.
Karen, I can't tell you how much we appreciate, one, your involvement, not only with the Blue Angels, but everything that you do for us here in the community. A lot of people don't realize the Blue Angels became involved with the town of Smyrna in the '70s. So it's been a long, ongoing relationship, and one that is very special to so many of us here in the community. And the tie now that we have to Pensacola and how they feel, it's just been amazing. And I will tell you that Janet, and Christina, and Michael, and Jeff's brother, all feel this is home as well. And so it doesn't surprise me, the connections that have been made through this tragedy, and to hear that you're now a part of being with the team, and getting to shoot them in, looks like, all different places. And for those of you that don't know, that was the day that the Blues flew in, and we got to greet them on the runway for the day they were coming back in for the airshow after being away for a little while. So we are glad to have the relationship, and hope that it will continue for years to come. Anybody else?
Just to add, Karen, thank you. Thank Danny for us.
Yes.
And let him know we would have loved to have him here for the presentation tonight, but he's with us, and we appreciate his spirit of being here. Ron, Susan, thank you for getting all this connected with her, and through John, and so forth. We appreciate Carpe Artista and all they do in our community. And I can tell you just what Mayor just said, the Blue Angels are family to us. So to have something presented to us in the manner that they've all taken the time, you've reached out, had them all sign that and bring that to us, just means a lot. They're part of our family here.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, anyone else, or any other correspondence, communications?
Nothing else at this time, ma'am.
Okay, consent agenda. We have a little lengthy consent agenda. These are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine matters, and do not necessarily need to be talked about individually. Any council member can pull off an item if they want to discuss it individually and vote on it individually, but I always like to read the consent agenda, so you all know exactly what we are voting on. So item A of the consent agenda is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease with Rutherford County relative to the practice field area located behind the Rutherford County Clerk's Office. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sessions paving relative to roadway patching repairs. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a licensing agreement with Accessology II LLC relative to video recording ADA trainings. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the construction of the Sam Ridley widening project. Item E, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Kimmerly Horn and Associates Incorporated relative to grant writing for the Smyrna Public Works Department. Item F, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with CSX Railroad relative to the installation of fiber optic line under railroad tracks. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Quality Exteriors relative to the Golf Course Clubhouse Roof Project. Item H, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Motorola Solutions relative to the Police Department radio maintenance. Item I, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Paul Corporation relative to the microfiltration maintenance support for the water treatment plant. Item J, consideration of the declaration of surplus items. Item K, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Universal Linen relative to the Event Center linen services. And the last item is item L, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with American Electric Monitoring, AEM, relative to the monitoring for defendants placed on probation. Is there an item that council would like to pull off and discuss separately? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve, second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We will now move on to old business. We have four public hearings tonight. Before I move into the first public hearing, just to let those in the audience know, with public hearings, you are allowed to come up and speak for or against an item when you come up. We ask that you give your name, your address, and whether you live inside the city limits of Smyrna or not. You are limited to three minutes and the one time that you get to speak per item. So Kevin, our first public hearing is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 34G, Group A, Parcel 1.00, containing approximately 1.45 acres. It's requested by Robert Latimer to go from C2 to LSO to PRD with LSO. The property's located on South Lowry Street, and it is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request on South Lowry Street. It has frontage on Lowry Street, but also on Stewart Drive and South Side Drive, would have access from South Side Drive and Stewart Drive. The land use plan will support commercial development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and C3, as well as the South Side PRD, which is to the rear. This proposed PRD is for development containing 21 townhouses. We did attach the pattern book. We did receive a revised pattern book since first reading that has been, is what is in your packet and was sent to you prior to that as well, with some tweaks that they had made between the first and second reading, primarily about the architectural, some of the wording in the architectural elevations and that sort of thing. Wasn't a, didn't change anything as far as really what they were wanting to do, just a little bit more detail. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, with a couple of conditions. The developer has requested approval to have a dog park as an amenity in lieu of the playground area required by the zoning ordinance. The planning commission has recommended approval of that, as requested, and that the requested density is 14.48 units per acre. It's recommended by the Lowry Street overlay for this area that, for standalone multifamily developments, would not exceed 12 units per acre. The plank, or the maximum number of units allowed at that density would be 17. The planning commission has recommended approval of the PRD at the requested density. And that's one again.
Questions for Kevin on this? No questions. HG, I know you had asked for some of the negative questions of the packet, were you good?
Yeah, Kevin, I think you updated the package.
So you're good. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will go to the public at this time to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next item under old business is item B, which also is a public hearing. It's a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27P, Group B, Parcel 22.00, to go from R1 to H, with H1, to R4 with H1, and Parcel 23.00 from R1 to R4. It is containing approximately 66 one-hundredths of an acre and four-tenths of an acre, respectively. It's requested by Andy Johns. The properties are located on Hazelwood Drive, and this is a second reading.
Yes, Mayor and Council, these are both adjacent tracks of land. They're on the west side of Hazelwood Drive. It's about 1,000 feet north of the Hazelwood Drive and Eden Springs West intersection. Land use plan will support a downtown mixed huge type development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and C2. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval. The H1 on the northernmost track, as shown on the map, is when the historic overlay, the southern one is not, so that's why there is a little bit of difference in the zoning. But the base zoning is the same for both, which would be R4, is what has been requested.
Questions for Karen? There's not been any changes since our first reading, so.
That's correct.
Since there's no questions from council, I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 32, Parcel 5.07, containing approximately 20.84 acres. It's requested by RHV LLC to go from R1 to R3. The property's located on Eugene Drive, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request. It's at the end of Eugene Drive, which is north of the Potts Crossing Development. The land use plan will support low-density residential development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R3. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously. Again, nothing has changed since first reading.
Okay, this is one that I know I've gotten some calls and some emails on. Can you talk a little bit about the zoning that's currently around this property?
Yeah, of course, this property is currently zoned R1, and part of the parcels around it are R1 as well, primarily to the east, as well as between this track and Potts Crossing are all R1. The Potts Crossing Development itself, as well as Vineyards, which is directly west of it, are R3. The zoning in Laverne, I don't know what the zoning to the north is in Laverne, the zoning to the west is R1 in Laverne as well, which is very similar to the R1 in Smyrna. The R3 that's requested is nothing like the R3 that would be under the Laverne zoning ordinance, which would allow for multifamily and things like that, and that's not what this would allow.
And I did have a few concerns about that, that it could possibly be multifamily.
Right.
Other comments or questions? Another question that I've gotten quite a bit is back entrance, whether for construction or once it's complete.
Kind of regardless of this rezoning, if someone were to develop it, at this time, the only access is through Eugene Drive, through the Potts Crossing Development. There's vacant property to the north and to the east. If the developer were to be able to obtain an easement for construction access or something, that could be done, certainly. But that would really be up to those property owners to grant that. So whether or not.
And I guess that's what I was getting at, that's not something that we can demand of the property owners of that.
Right. Now certainly, we as a, you know, whatever zoning happens here, whatever the plan comes in for us to review, which we haven't received as of yet, we as a staff would certainly recommend to the planning commission to provide stub streets probably north and east, so if any of those adjacent properties ever develop, that there would be other ways in and out for these folks. That would happen eventually when those adjoining properties develop. But initially, at least, the only access is Eugene Drive, just how Potts Crossings was developed. It was developed from south to north, and there was never, in Laverne, there was no stub street when that property developed there. So it's the only way in and out to this tract of land.
And just for the viewers, the dark green line is the Laverne.
That's Laverne-Smyrna boundaries. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So Kevin, the subdivision that's in Laverne there, Buffalo Drive and the end of Potts Crossing, you said it's zoned R1 in Laverne, but.
Yes.
Based on the way those lots look compared to our R3, what's the density difference between their R1 and our R3?
It's pretty similar. I mean, it's a little, they're a little bit larger lots. I think those were kind of, many of those lots, when I looked at them, were exactly 15,000 square feet. So I mean, they were, and some of the lots in Potts Crossing are certainly between 10 and 15, but there are some that are larger. So the density is very similar, certainly, because it's still single-family and relatively similar density, not a major difference.
Kevin, did I understand you'd say the R1 in Laverne would allow multifamily?
It would not. The R3 in Laverne would allow multifamily, yes.
So can you kind of speak to the de facto zoning of the R1 that we have, and kind of the way that, how that began, and why it's set up that way?
Under the town zoning ordinance, if property is annexed and there's no requested, requested zone with the annexation, the default zoning is R1. And in prior years, before the state law changed, and when cities could annex on their own initiative, quite a bit of time, property was annexed and zoned R1, because at the time, it was not anticipated for development. R1 under our zoning ordinance also allows for agricultural uses, which obviously, some of this still is being farmed and could still continue to be farmed. And so it would allow for that to continue as well, legally, not as a grandfather situation. And so that was kind of how Smyrna, at least, and many other communities too, when they annexed on their own initiative and looked at those areas, how, that's what they zoned it for many times. And so that's really what, for the most part, that's what Smyrna did as well, when they looked into this area and other areas around town.
So you're saying that Potts Crossing, the Vineyards, and looking across Blair, that probably at one point in time were R1 and later zoned to R3?
Most likely. That all happened before I was employed here, but I believe that's correct, yes.
Kevin, it seems to me like, making data, every parcel that we brought into the city was R1, and then we had to change it to whatever.
Right. Yeah, that's difficult, what happened, yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Kevin, for the public knowledge, what is the minimum lot size of an R3?
10,000 square feet.
And Kevin, what you said is, as far as access, the only access is going to be here at Eugene Drive, unless.
Unless a surrounding property. Yes, I mean, there's no other way. This property was developed, Mr. Potts has, of course, he still lives out there, and he sold to a couple of the other tracts, and then they, now he sold the remaining piece of it. That's what was left of his property, and that was his access and his only access to his house. And when it was, when that subdivision was planned out and laid out, that was how it was left. So that's all it's, that's all there is.
And that doesn't matter if it's R1, R3, or whatever.
Regardless.
Whatever it comes in at.
Right.
But in the next stage, whether that's now, or we can ask for planning to look at stubbing streets for whenever the R1.
Continue.
To the right, I never can direction wise.
That would be to the east, but yes, to the right, to the east.
So all of the R1s that we see there. Okay. Okay.
And you know, it's, as an R3 request, the way we looked at it from the planning commission anyway, was that it perfectly matches what Smyrna has surrounding it. And you know, the council has had some long, hard discussion about PRDs and density and things of that nature. So one of the things I think we even mentioned was, R3 is the simple way to get something in. A PRD puts a lot of oversight on it, but it also allows higher density. It could allow a higher density product, meaning that it could be 5,000 or 6,000 square foot lots, and townhomes stacked in there as well. So one of the things I like to make sure that the public understands is that this is the simplest and most fitting zoning request for what they live in, what surrounds them. In the future, it could come in as a much denser product and include multifamily and things of that nature. So R3 kind of makes a match to what's all around it, except for the R1 that has not developed yet. And if and when it does, there's a strong possibility it will not remain R1. It will be requested, just like this is, so.
Other comments or questions?
I agree that R3 makes most sense, or makes sense. My concern is that we're, there's only one access way at this point in time, and that's going to put a lot of homes and cars coming through this one access. And I understand that we can plan for the possibility of additional access when the other lots develop, or excuse me, when the other properties may develop. But that's just the one thing that concerns me, is putting all the traffic on this one access.
And I don't disagree. The thing is, if they don't come for rezoning, they can build it as R1, and they're still going to have to go.
Right.
Right through that, through there as well.
Somebody there's got their property for sale. So I don't know who that landowner is, but they got their property for sale, so you can kind of figure that something's going to wind up in there sometimes.
Other questions or comments?
You know, I think there's one thing that we can, I don't know how much Solis would give, probably not very much, but I mean, we, as a town, will be certain that as the construction goes on, that it's done as unobtrusively as it can be done, which would include making sure that the developers do not mess up the streets, and that the police make sure that the trucks don't go too fast through there. You know, and when it gets down to it, there's not much more than that than we can do to it. I mean, the real question to me is, why restrict the owner of this property from being able to develop his property? And has been said, everything around it will end up being R3, most assured. I don't see anything really different happening. But it's just tough for a small group of people, but then by the same token, telling the owner, you can do this, or you can't do this with your property, is not really within our scope of operations.
Other questions or comments?
I've got one comment. We have gotten quite a few emails, and the only thing I wanted to say is, some of the emails that I've gotten, I've been a little concerned by some of the comments and the tone. I want to make sure that folks understand that just because we don't vote the way you think we should, or we don't seem to agree with your perspective, doesn't mean that we're not considering your perspective, and that we're not looking at everything that's involved. There are legal ramifications to the decisions we make. There are some things we're allowed to do by law, and some things we're not allowed to do by law. We also have to remain consistent. So if we have denied similar requests in the past for certain reasons, then we have set a precedent. If we have approved similar requests with similar issues, then we've also set a precedent. So those are things that we all have to consider and discuss when we make these decisions. We don't just make a decision based on a whim. So just because we may or may not agree with your perspective, doesn't mean we're not listening, that we don't hear you. It just means, in this case, we don't see it with only that perspective.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Kevin. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I will ask if there is anyone here in the public that would like to speak for or against, if you'll come forward and state your name, your address, and if you live inside the city limits.
Madam Mayor, my name is Wayne Bain. I live at 6007 Eugene Drive in Smyrna, Tennessee, lifelong residence. I heard your comments there, Mr. Cole. I agree with them. Yours too, Mr. Sullivan, because I stood before this body, I think it was in 2006, maybe, many of you were some of the same commissioners. Same thing, a man has his own property. This is back when the subdivision was being developed, and Mr. Potts was not able to sell his property at that time, because this commission denied, and I supported that, even though I wanted him to sell his property. I supported the decision that was made because it was made on safety, or that's what was told to me. So he didn't get to sell his property at that time because of all the construction traffic going up through, because of safety concerns that this body had. So he wasn't able to sell it. And now, we do get the, he did sell it, I guess, and now we want to double that traffic. All I want to know is, I mean, I'm not opposed to growth, I really ain't. I don't care if they go commercial with it, but one way in and one way out. And if it was a safety issue then, and you couldn't sell his property. And if it was a safety issue then, and you couldn't sell his property, now we want to double the density of that with a R3. And what's changed, other than the fact that we had more property? I would request, I would request that you go look at this place, look at the subdivision. Now, when my neighbor, when I come in and my neighbor is parked because he's got three cars and his driveway's only got room for two, he parked on the side of the road. Now, if another person's coming out, I got to stop. Now, if someone's parked in front of, let's say, Mr. Slate, he lives right next to me, if someone's parked there and sometimes they have parties and someone's parked over here and my house is on fire, you can't get a fire engine to my house.
That's right.
There's, there's safety issues there. And when we start putting that much population into place and getting one person out, well then I'm starting to look at what happened with Laverne over there, largest subdivision in the state of Tennessee. And if I mess up one road, there's 5,000 people that can't get out. The school's going in and there's, there's property is fixing to be developed right down the street on Rock Springs Road. I ask only that we take, take a breath and look and see where we're going. I think we need some controlled growth, not just growth for the heck of it. I'm all about growth. But if you look at that road, it takes me 15 to 20 minutes when school's in, just to get out of my subdivision, just to get out. Rock Springs Road is not big enough for the growth. It ain't. And I don't have to tell you that. Just drive down it when, when school's going on and see, or when people's getting off, going back to work. It's a thoroughfare going to Knowlesville. We've got, let's see, almost 200 acres fixed to be developed, probably, right down the street, less than a quarter of a mile. You've got three or four main subdivisions that feed Rock Springs Road. I submit that we better look at this from a safety standpoint in terms of putting that many more cars in there. And no, I don't want that, it's only one way in and one way out. I believe it is a safety issue. It was then, it should still be now. That's, that's probably-
Thanks, Mr. Bain.
And thank you for your work. I appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you'll come forward and state your name and address and if you live in the town.
Hello, my name is Ruben Garcia and I live at 6,000 Eugene Drive. I'd like to ask you today to vote no to this rezoning. My concerns are safety and congestion for our neighborhood. It is already hard enough to exit our neighborhood on Rock Springs Road during the high traffic times. Also, with only one access road, Eugene Drive, to this planned community, this result in safety concern for emergency situations, not to mention tons of traffic on the street where small children live. Please don't overcrowd our neighborhoods and make them undesirable to live in, result in, we have plenty of land for safe development, you know, and for good neighborhoods. We elected you all to do good for our communities. Please vote no. Thank you for your service to our communities. Please protect our neighborhoods from being overcrowded.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Anyone else? Hi.
Hello, my name is Paul Lewis. I live at 6,004 Eugene Drive. As you've already stated, you guys got a lot of emails and calls. It's because no one who lives along Eugene Drive or down Potts Crossing wants this change. We do not mind at all that the owner could develop his land as R1. It is a lower density than what we will see with R3 and for many of the same reasons that have already been brought up to you. It's a, it's a huge safety problem. The road is not wide enough. The road that it feeds into, for one thing, I stood on my corner just the other day. Seventy to eighty percent of the traffic coming down Potts Crossing comes out of Laverne. They have no shopping, they have no stores. They're going to come to Smyrna and we like that because that means tax dollars for us. But it's putting a huge burden on all those homeowners up and down Potts Crossing. People with children cannot let their children play in the front. They just can't. Also, we need more R1, I believe. Because of that lower density, the larger lots, we're going to attract higher level buyers. That's a problem in this town. There is no place for the professionals to go. There's no place for folks who are looking for higher end housing to go besides Knowlesville. And we're in a location that is strategically located to the hospital. So if you're going to bring in professionals of that level, or we're also strategically located to the interstate, so folks going in, businessmen going into town. It's a perfect location to attract a higher buyer, a higher end buyer. Also, I'm really concerned because of all the additional development up and down Rock Springs. It is the commuter backway to Franklin, to Knowlesville and everything to the west. In the mornings and the afternoon, it is constant flow. And they're not going slow. They're not following the speed limit. I bought on Eugene Drive eight years ago for the very fact that it had been a cul-de-sac for 20 years. Twenty years. We had about maybe 20 cars a day going up. And according to what's allowed under R3, we could have up to 300 cars a day moving up and down our little street. I like Smyrna. I love Smyrna because it's a small town that's big enough. But our quality of life is directly being affected by this change. And I ask of you again, please vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else?
My name is Paul Zieglefsky. I live on 6,009 Eugene Drive. Mayor, city council members. During this rezoning process, I learned that all my neighbors, I spoke with all Potts Crossings and I spoke with Laverne for double reason. I learned that both of them are in favor of R1. Safety congestion, you heard other stories. I live right in this corner. So I was thinking about Mayor Reed and all city council members, because my three-bedroom windows are on that proposed street connecting to the subdivision. And according to Town of Smyrna zoning ordinance, with 20% loss for roads, this parcel could accommodate in R1 about 48 homes. In R3, about 72. So the simple difference for everybody is 50% more. Now picture yourself, you live in homes somewhere, you have bedrooms. This could, two, three cars per home, could be about 200 to 300 cars a day driving next to my bedroom windows. Now picture yourself in my shoes, would you like this for yourself? I understand where you're coming from, rezoning. If this would have back road, I would not object as strong as I do. And when I spoke with the whole subdivision, because very few people knew about this rezoning, everybody is in favor of our R1. We are not trying to stop any construction, that would be foolish. But we are trying to plead with city council to have, I use the word conscious, because we do not want to be packed like sardines and overcrowding is easy to do but unintelligent. We would like to have intelligent growth of city of Smyrna and live in dignity. And I hope you would help us with your conscience to accommodate that. So number one is safety, no back road access. Also, when I spoke with some engineers, because I'm learning a lot about this process, they are bringing up stormwater runoff issues with this new development. So you need to consider those problems as well. And about congestion, I already spoke. We appreciate your work. Just please level with us on human basis as far as dignity. Because we like to live in dignity, as you are. We like our new developer neighbor to have his property developed, but at the level which would accommodate that traffic and everybody around. They do not have to bulldozer us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, if you'll come forward?
My name is Teresa Zieglefska, in the community known as Dr. Z. I live, in last 16 years, 6009, as my husband, Eugene Drive. I will not go into details what other people talk, I conclude with them. Indeed, in Smyrna, we do not have larger community which would attract professionals. I will not go into details which I sent in emails to all of you in respect of time. However, I would like to let you know and speak to your consciousness for many reasons. Smyrna is my home. I care deeply about my neighbors, about my community and would be, besides all inconvenience, my bedroom's thus construction is the public safety. I drive on Eugene Drive every day, sometimes a couple times. When cars are parked on the side, it's already a problem with traffic. We do not oppose development, it's understandable, but without additional back road, it is no way from legal point. I understand that all of you, you represent us, Mr. Atkins, for you does not make sense because Smyrna R3 for us does, is our safety and public safety. We are only looking for disaster. I would like to speak to your consciousness. Please vote no to that rezoning. Keep R1. And even with R1, with future development, please communicate with owner what is going to be done because other back road is needed. Eugene Drive is not enough. In case if need for fire truck, in case if need for ambulance, we are talking for disaster, truly. This is really, really, from legal point of view, I understand. We will keep you accountable because you are representing us. Thank you very much. Please vote no.
We're, so when we're doing our public hearings, we give everyone an opportunity to speak and we just ask that you remain quiet so we can hear everyone and we will make sure that everyone here that wants to speak has that opportunity. Is there anyone else? Please come forward.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Gerard Bates. I live at 4,003 Claude Drive, Smyrna. And I've been here a resident for 15 years. Claude Drive is the first main drive that goes around the lower part of Potts Crossing and it joins Iona. There's a stop sign right at Claude Drive, first stop sign as you're coming up Potts Crossing. You go up a little further, there's another stop sign at Eugene Drive, which is all because of safety. We have people living close to me that have been going to the hospital on a frequent basis. Ambulances come in. FedEx, UPS is in there every day. Garbage trucks are in there every day. We have constant drive, people going up and down Potts Crossing into the subdivision. It's very, and I am fully in favor of any new development. I've seen the whole vineyards develop. I've seen the Laverne area develop. We're expecting that. My wife will curse at me because of the traffic. It has transpired over the last 15 years in Smyrna. But we like the area and I am only asking that the council consider the request for R3, which I think is high density. I've seen some of it in the Woodmont area of where they're putting in townhouses with one-car garages. Where can you park your second car? You can't. You have to park it out on the street. So they're making additional parking areas along the street in order to accommodate the residents. If we see townhouses and multifamily buildings going into this new area, it's only going to cost much more congestion for the citizens coming into that particular area itself. We have people from Laverne, like was stated before, they use Potts Crossing as an easy exit because it's much more convenient than going up to the next level where they come out on Vineyard Drive and it is a very short drive. You can't see as well for cars coming down through Rock Springs Road. So this is really a safety issue that we need to address and I hope the council will so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. If you'll state your name, address, if you live inside the city limits and if you're here representing anyone.
My name's Jeremy Etheridge. I live at 8186 Mona Road. I do not live in the city limits and I represent the developer.
Okay.
I've listened to a lot of their concerns and, you know, they're, they're all valid concerns, but I just wanted to, you know, talk about what we do. I mean, we build quality, well-built, all brick homes. We've been tweaking the lot count with, with the engineer. We don't have anything final right now, but currently, I think what we saw last, we're looking at like 56 lots, you know, much different than, than the max amount that we'd be looking at for the R3 amount, you know. So, you know, that's, that's what we're looking at right now. So I just want to make sure everybody understood where we were at and, you know, we've, we've been around a long time. We build quality, you know, quality homes and, you know, we care about the footprint we leave behind for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against this? If you'll come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Glenn Dodd, 459 Blair Road. The property east of that is a farmland and it's actually owned by my mother-in-law, Margaret B. Nagerin. She was a Blair before she married the Nagerin. That farm down Blair Road used to be on both sides. Our brother got part of it when their mom and dad passed away and he sold his part on that side. Anyway, y'all talked about construction traffic coming in. My mother-in-law is, if, if, I think you might know her, she's from Old School. I doubt if she would ever request or give someone permission to have a access to that for construction. And I don't really want to see it myself. The land still belongs to her. I married the daughter. When she passes on, it will be my daughter's nights. But I know the land is going to be developed. And we got two offers over there and I think one of them has been out there at my place on accidents and some other issues because of traffic on Blair Road and Rock Springs Road. Rock Springs Road, I have tractors. I do a lot of farming down Rock Springs Road, cooking lane over into Laverne, hay crops. There's been several times that it, and I did have, one person did hit my tractor, didn't cause no damage to the tractor, it caused a little to his truck. He went on, we discussed it, he went on. Anyway, the traffic on Rock Springs Road, and like Mr. Bain said, development of the 190 acres at the Rock Springs Church there, there needs to be something done to Rock Springs Road to the county line. I can't do nothing about Blair Road because it's there. It's built. I guess it could be widened, but-
Three minutes, Mayor.
Safety of the Rock Springs Road and the access is denied.
Thanks, Mr. Dodd. Anyone else to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one else, I will close this public hearing. Counsel, any comments or questions of Kevin before we vote?
Kevin, can you talk a little bit? Rock Springs Road has been mentioned as far as what we're doing as a town with Rock Springs currently.
Yeah, there's, I guess there's some things we've got going on right now, and there's some things that are kind of long-term projects, too. I mean, we've, we did a whole corridor study basically from Old Nashville Highway all the way to the county line, looking at various things that need to be done long-term. There are some things, the development that's kind of west of here was mentioned, and that development's going to be involved in signalizing the Waldron and Rock Springs in an intersection, as well as widening the Rock Springs Road kind of in front of that development. So, I mean, there are some things that are coming, improvements that are coming certainly to Rock Springs Road. I know that Mr. Rose, I don't believe he's here tonight, but he's just working on trying to get some, some grand monies to look at Rock Springs Road to help to make happen those, some of those things that we were identified in that corridor studies. I mean, I think we are actively seeking out money and seeking out projects to make some improvements to Rock Springs Road. You know, obviously, we're aware of the issues that we have on that road, really from the whole stretch of, like I say, from Old Nashville Highway all the way west. And we're also trying to work through with some of our neighboring communities for alternative to Rock Springs Road to get from Smyrna to Williamson County as well, so.
And I just want to make it clear, this rezoning would not allow townhouses.
It would not.
And that it would not. So I just want to make sure that people understand that. Other questions or comments for...
I heard, I think it was Mr. Etheridge, I hope I got his name right, the developer, mention that they see the potential for about 55 or 56 homes there. Kevin, can you speak to the difference between what R1 would allow and what R3 would allow, so the public will know? And then I've got another question.
Yeah, again, and what I've done is just took the raw property and assumed you lose 20% for roads and detention ponds and that sort of thing. And with R1, you'd have about 48 lots and R3 72. That would kind of be a 10,000, that's 72, 10,000 square feet lots, which is probably not realistic.
So 24 estimated difference in R3 and R1 homes, right?
As an estimate.
I've heard all these people get up and speak, the neighbors over there, and I want you to know, we do try to listen, we respect your opinions. And so, I actually made a couple of calls during the process of receiving emails and things of that nature to some of you. I don't know if you're in the room or not, but I spoke to probably four or five people that left their phone numbers, not trying to speak, but, and some of the misinformation that was out there, I think, got them a little alarmed. So I don't want to say anybody was spreading misinformation. We just realize that sometimes they don't always realize what a zoning stands for until they do their due diligence, and the difference of Laverne and Smyrna. So, one of the things I heard repetitiously here was, they're not opposed to having it developed. And so, when I hear Mr. Etheridge speak about, you know, 55 or 56 homes versus what R1 would allow, which would be an estimated 48, I'm just wondering if there's a way, I don't know that we can do this, I'm asking aloud, can we potentially use the idea of moving forward, but not allowing more than 55 or 56 homes with an R3 zone? Can we do that, counsel?
I would recommend that you utilize a PRD for that purpose instead of base zoning. Kevin, have you got one?
I think that's probably, I think it'd be very difficult to do that.
Okay. So that answers my question there. And I asked that question for myself, but also for them, because I know that they're a little concerned about having 20-ish homes more than what one zone would allow and what another would allow. Looking for some way to make me, try to find a happy meeting there if we can.
One of the things that I was thinking of, and one of the things I leaned over and asked Mark about as well was similar to this. A lot of times when we see zonings come in, we already have a design book from the developer. So we have a very good idea of what they're going to do, usually down to lot counts and where the roads are going to be, and detention ponds, et cetera. And I agree with Mark. What I heard from almost everyone was they're not opposed to development. They understand that as R1, it's, it can be developed just as it is, whether we vote yes or no. And there's going to be construction traffic, and there's going to be additional cars, really no matter what we do. But the question is, is how many? And some good points brought up about Rock Springs Road, we've already acknowledged that there's a corridor study we need to do, and we're already starting that process. So that was my, that was actually where I was going. The difference between 48 and 56 is only seven or eight homes. If we had a PRD or even a design book at this point that showed those lots, then it kind of, it kind of makes us feel more locked in. I'm actually getting a little more concerned about voting R3 when it could be 72 homes. And I understand the developer's here telling us what he's doing. I know he's talking to engineers, and there's probably a likelihood that the product, that property couldn't develop to 72 homes because of the layout and the layout, and I get that. But that's kind of where I'm thinking is, if the developer could bring this back with a design book, it's 56, once he has his lots done, then it'd be easier for me to support R3 with knowing exactly what's going to be there. And that, I hadn't thought that way until we heard that conversation tonight. There is quite a bit of difference between 56 and, or 72 and 48. And 56 and 48 is not a whole lot of difference. And I don't know, but I think residents would be a lot more comfortable with 56 than an open-ended zoning. Then the other comment, and Mr. Dodd, this is really for you, please don't take this as adversarial at all, but you made some comments about traffic on Blair Road and Rock Springs Road, and unfortunately, you're probably the only one in this room that has the ability to help us with that. And you're telling us that you can't. So I just want you to understand that your point is well-taken, but if you allowed a back entrance out of this property to Sam Ridley or Blair Road, that problem would be resolved. And I understand. I know your mother-in-law, and I know your wife, and I understand that they are very adamant, they're old school, they do not want to give up their property or sell it, and that's their right, and I agree and understand. But the point that you made, you're the only one that can actually sell it, or they are.
I agree with that. And you mentioned their right to do that, as much as the owner of this property has the right to do what they want to do with it.
Right, exactly.
So, property rights is a big thing for us. We try to make sure we, we work with everybody tandem here, but I don't know, Mr., did Mr. Etheridge leave?
He's hidden behind.
Uh, you hiding? Okay. Can I ask you, will you come up, and can I ask you a question? Do you mind bringing him up? I guess the question I have for you is based on what you just told us.
Right.
And from the perception of an engineer's idea, how, how in detail, or how, how much length have you gone to to kind of figure out what your plat design may look like at this point?
I mean, we've gone, it's pretty, it's pretty detailed originally. It had a few more lots on it, you know, but after hearing some of the concerns, our engineer, who's, who's out of town, or else he'd be here with that plat. But, you know, with some of the concerns that, that we had been hearing, immediately around some of the, some of the folks that are here tonight, we, we had looked at making some of those lots immediately impacting their property a little bit larger, which decreased our lot count a little bit, you know? And those, those few extra lots that we're trying to get, you know, you know, make, make this a doable project.
I guess my next question would be this, and this is strictly on you, because you've got a request in here, and that's what we're deliberating now. Is this something that you personally think you might want to think through and bring back as a PRD at some point? I'm just asking a question.
I, I don't, not that I know of, no. I'd have to speak to the, to the owner, you know, to that. But, you know, our plans are, you know, are to do what, you know, what we, what I'd said to do. I think it's, I think it was 56 lots the last time I looked at it, but, you know, not, not a big difference between what we could do, you know, at R1, but it is enough to make a difference on whether or not the project's a viable project.
I do want to tag on something you said earlier. I personally have seen your product. You do leave a good footprint. You guys do a nice custom trial-looking homes. They're all brick. And so, for the concern of any neighbor that may not know that product, just know that it's going to make your product look every bit as nice. I've seen that product out there, so just want to say that.
May I ask a quick question? What would you anticipate price points for the homes that you'd be building here?
And I know we're kind of getting out there a little bit. Yeah. You know, we're, we're, we're in the process of trying to, to put together the, the right product mix for this, for this product, you know? And there's, there's several different types of professionals out there. There are the professionals that, that are doing really well and can afford the, the most expensive of properties, but there's some, you know, we're trying to put the most affordable all brick house that we can put on here, too. I mean, you know, but with the cost of lots nowadays, you know, there's, there's no such thing as a cheap house, no matter the, the size of the lot, so.
So I know you said you're working on the plan book. About how long do you think that will be before you have that completed?
As far as the lots, I mean, we've, we've got that, I mean, the engineer has that at his office. But as far as the, the house plans, you know, we're working on that.
Just the plan book showing where the lots and everything will be?
It's, it's sitting at Halderson's there.
Okay. He's just on vacation?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Just a couple of things. I, I know someone expressed a concern about stormwater and runoff. And, you know, Kevin, when he was talking about a 20% figure as far as roads and detention or retention, our orgs do not allow for a property to disperse any more water than is currently displaced, correct?
Yeah, they would have to meet all of our requirements for erosion control and quality and quantity detention, detention ponds and various things. So, you know, they would have to meet all those requirements, no matter, again, no matter what the zoning is.
Other questions or comments?
Just my comment. I voted for this at planning, and the reason I did it, and we talked about it last week when we were talking about being consistent. And from a consistency basis, you know, when we're looking at Potts Crossing and the other subdivisions here, they began as R1 when annexation occurred, and then they consistently were annexed, and when they were brought in, they were brought in as R3. The zoning here is no different than the current R3 for, you know, the immediate property of Potts Crossing. It's, it's consistent with that. When you look at Laverne, their R1 is very consistent with R3. And as a matter of fact, and again, I hope it's Mr. Etheridge, I actually was concerned, and I reached out and talked to the principal of this, this company. And he told me, which was very consistent with what was said tonight, that, you know, that especially the homes that, that abutted next to the larger properties in the Laverne side, that they thought they would probably do larger lots there to be consistent there. So I think we're working on solutions for Rock Springs. When we get to looking at this from site and plat, we've got to make, we'll make sure that emergency vehicles can get in and out, and that's part of an approval process. So when I look at this, I just want to be consistent. I want to be fair. I've heard concerns. I think they can be addressed. I'm encouraged with what I'm hearing about how it would develop out. Looked at some other properties that these folks have developed, and they are nice, all brick homes, nice-sized lots, probably start around $350,000 and up. And everything that I've heard from them is, you know, everything that I've seen is, and what I want to do is be fair and consistent.
Other comments or questions?
I've got a question for Kevin. When this does come before planning, the stubs to the east can be required, correct?
Yeah, we, we typically would do that only probably east and even into the north.
Yeah.
I want to just touch on what Tim said, because we, as a planning commission, I, too, supported it from the very same reasons that Tim did, from a consistency perspective. You don't, in planning anyway, in planning, when you do this, what you're looking for is consistent growth of zoning. So R3 is the product that is all around it. That's what is coming in. Everything all around there, when it developed, came in those sized lots. So consistency for he and I, from a planning perspective, is something that we try to make sure we do. Now, I did, from Mr. Etheridge's point of view, mentioning about 55 or so lots, that, that gives me comfort knowing that an R3 might not be 72 homes after all. And so, the reason I voted the way that Tim did from the planning perspective was, it was unanimous, I think, was it not, Kevin, from a planning commission? So I know it goes to counsel for more deliberation, and that's, that's fair. I think that that's important, that we always try to do the consistent thing in the planning department moving forward. So that's why I supported it then, I just want to make that known.
Other comments or questions? Okay. Then do I have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it to put it back on the floor.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
For the same reasons that they were discussing regarding consistency, I actually voted no the first time. And, and I still have those same concerns. I understand that there are going to be fewer homes. It still may be more than what's in the R1, but it's fewer than the 72 that would be allotted. But we still are facing the one access for all these homes to enter and exit out of. I understand that the other surrounding properties have been rezoned to R3. I also see that they also have alternate accesses where you can get in and out. And so, I'm still very concerned with the fact that all of the, all of the homes that are going to be on this part of the development still have this one single access to in and out. I understand that we can put stubs so that for future development, we can address the issue, but for right now, that issue doesn't, is not being addressed. So I'm still concerned with, with that issue.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Diane, won't we do roll call? And this is for a motion to approve for our, the rezoning to R3.
Councilman Koch, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Councilman Morell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peebles?
No.
Councilman Sullivan?
No.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
No.
So do, based on advice of counsel from last time, do I have another motion on the floor?
I make a motion to deny the request to rezone from R1 to R3.
Based on your...
Based on my concerns with access.
Okay. So we have a motion to deny zoning from R1 to R3 based on access concerns. Do I have a second?
I will second, but I also want to make a comment to the developer. This is just me to you. I would support this at 56 lots if we had that nailed down in a, in a PRD or a plat. My concern is that an R3 zoning is open-ended, and maybe you guys don't develop it, and you end up selling the land, and somebody comes behind you and cram 72 homes on that piece of property. And that's really the reason I voted no. So it's not that I just don't support R3. It's that I, I'm concerned that 72 lots on there is too many. So I second it. So I second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Just that I, you know, take a little objection to say, if you've got a zoned R3, and you're putting the right number of homes or the allowed number of homes on an R3 lot, that it's actually cramming them in there. I don't think that's a fair assessment.
Any other comments or questions or discussion?
Maybe a poor choice of words, Tim, but my point's still the same. Not that they're crammed, but it would be more than 56.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comment? Ms. Diane, if you will call roll on a motion to deny R3 to go from R3 to R1 based on...
R1 to R3.
R1 to R3, thank you. A motion to deny going from R1 to R3 based on concerns about access.
And density.
And density.
Councilman Koch, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Morell?
No.
Councilwoman Peebles?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
No.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
Passed for two.
So, motion passes to deny. Steve, I would like to echo what you said. And Mr. Etheridge, I hope you've heard that council is not opposed to redevelopment, and I'm not opposed to redevelopment at 56 homes. I'll be honest, I'm not sure how the neighbors would feel about that, but I think they'd like it a lot better than 72 homes. And I hope that you'll consider possibly bringing it back through planning like that.
Other questions or comments? Okay. We will move on to our last public hearing. We're not done with public hearings yet. Our last public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title II, Bonds and Commissions, Chapter One, Arts Commission, and this is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor, council. As we've discussed previously, this is an amendment to the Arts Commission that would allow you to increase the numbers from six citizens to 10, and anywhere in between there that you so choose. Also, while they were changing the ordinance, they also restated some of the purposes within the ordinance, mission of the Art Commission. But the chief issue that you'll notice is increasing the membership.
Okay. Questions for Jeff on this? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll go public if anyone wants to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing and go to the council for a motion.
I move to approve the changes to the Arts Commission.
Okay, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Under new business, our planning commission report, we have a couple of items tonight. Our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of properties located on Tax Map 54, parcel 48.00, containing approximately 46 1/100ths of an acre, and part of parcel 14.00, containing approximately 1 1/100ths of an acre, requested by Thomas Stephan on behalf of Waill. I'm working on this Waill.
I'll talky, I believe.
Talky, thank you. I've been working on that all day, so sorry if I butchered that. And Andrew Waddy. Properties are located at the intersection of Rocky Fork Amble Road and Morton Lane. This is a first reading.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is an annexation request with an R3 zoning for a portion of two different parcels, and the zoning would be R3. This is at the intersection of Rocky Fork Amble Road and Morton Lane. The landage plan will support medium density residential here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and PRD, which is Cedar Hills and Blakeney in town, and then REM in Rutherford County. This area does allow within consolidated utility districts boundary for water service, but the town would be providing all other services. This annexation is to allow for the rebuilding and relocation of the intersection of Morton Lane and Rocky Fork Amble Road. This was something that the planning commission looked at pretty closely when the Blakeney development was first submitted to us, and was conditioned, actually, on, the approval of that was actually conditioned that this intersection improvement would be done before any COs could be issued on any houses out there. So it will be done as a part of the Blakeney development by that developer. The final plat was approved by the planning commission at the planning commission of the night, dedicating this new right of way. And I did include that plat for your information as well with this. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Kevin, will the existing Morton Lane piece there be closed?
Yeah, once this, the new Morton Lane is built, we would look at closing that. At that point, the council would have to make a decision what we want to do with that right of way. Certainly would be closed off and not used anymore.
Other questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item, under new business, is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 51.00, containing approximately 9.26 acres, which requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Carmen Margaret Kaisman. The property is located at 8162 Rocky Fork Amble Road, and this is a first reading.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is also an annexation with an R3 zoning request. It is at 8162 Rocky Fork Amble Road. Landage plan, again, would support medium density residential here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of the R3 and then the Cedar Hills PRD in Smyrna and REM in Rutherford County. Again, this does allow CUD's boundary for water service, but the town would be providing all other services. There is an existing single-family residence on this parcel. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Sean is not voting or participating, please, Diane.
Could this piece of property be joined with another budget?
Certainly could be. It is the same old. I think that would be the plan. It would all be developed together.
How large is that parcel up there?
It's roughly the same size. This one's nine acres, so it's roughly the same. There is an area in the middle that has been carved out with a separate house that's on a separate track, but kind of the horseshoe area will be...
That's not part of the...
That's a separate lot in the middle there.
Okay.
You don't have a plan book or anything for this yet, do you?
No, this is, this is just an R3 zoning at this time.
Okay.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Have you had another question? So have you had any discussions as to the number of homes that are looking to build on this portion?
No, I think the request is to get it into the city. I think once you get all the properties in the city, you would look at a development plan at that time.
That would be the appropriate way to look at it, correct?
That would be, I mean, certainly, I mean, someone could develop this, but in such an odd shape, it would be pretty difficult to do, probably in an economically lawful way.
I'm not opposed. I'm just saying that if there were more information, I'd like to know it before I vote.
Well, it just seems like we're getting ahead of things. If we're looking at an annexation and a zoning, and we're asking for a plan book, I think we're kind of getting ahead of the process here. That's all.
Well, if we had the information, though, I would just like to know it as a part of the process.
Other questions or comment? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, Ms. Diane. Our next item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation of the entirety of the existing right of way of Kedron Church Road. It's requested by staff. Right of way is approximately 1,400 feet long and connects Rocky Fork Road to Rocky Fork Amble Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, council, as part of the next item on your agenda, which is the rezoning request from Mr. Butler, staff, as part of that review of that PRD request, did recommend that the town annex the right of way of Kedron Church Road. This is an existing county road, about 1,400 feet between Rocky Fork Road and Rocky Fork Amble Road. This basically would allow for the town to control any improvements, and there are proposed improvements as a part of bank side PRD, as well as considering what we want to do with the, with a pre-crosses the road, potentially closing that forward there. Allow for the town to have control of that instead of the county highway department. So the planning commission did recommend approval of this annex.
I know this was an item that we had quite a bit of discussion about and were concerned about on, I guess it was at the workshop, no? Well, it was last, last time, yes. I was trying to remember which meeting. So any concerns or comments at this point?
If I'm not mistaken at the planning meeting, did you say that the church was meeting that evening to discuss they wanted a different access or something?
I think the developer had met with a member of the church the night before.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, that was shared.
And had a good discussion, I think, with them. I think certainly that's something that we also had to mean. Mr. Davenport, the chair of the planning commission, didn't mention he would like for us to work through that old road issue with the church. There are three houses that use that road as well as access, which in the church may kind of the main user, certainly as far as owners along the road. But yeah, certainly the developer and the church have been talking, and they're working, there's an issue that they're working out between the two of them as well.
And that the annexation allows us to navigate through that.
Right, I think it's the right thing to do. It gives us the ability to work with the church, the PRD requester, and then do the right thing with the road. Right now, the construction of Kedron Church Road falls to the developer, correct?
Can you prove it that it will be there? Yes, that will be part of their development.
Other questions?
This is just kind of a size question, but we're going to these situations where we have the mail kiosks and stuff like that. How big are, how many are required? How big do they want those to be, I guess is the question?
Honestly, I don't know exactly. I mean, they have to have one for every address, so it depends on how big the development is. We try to, if it's a much larger development, we try to make sure they're dispersed so they're not all in one spot, so everybody has to go to one spot. Concentrates all the parking and everything in one spot. That's what I'm saying.
Just looks like there's a big congestion, you know, at the mail kiosks from time to time.
Couldn't find it.
Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of properties located on Tax Map 54, parcels 12.01, 13.01, 15.01, 15.03, 15.04, 15.05, 15.06, 15.11, 15.12, and 15.22, and Tax Map 55A, Group B, parcel 1.00, containing approximately 89.2 acres. It's requested by Jerry Butler to go from R3 to PRD. The properties are located between Jericho Street and Kedron Church Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, council, this is the PRD request. This is one that Sean looked at last month and then turned down. They have brought back a revised plan. This is, as stated, as you just stated, is between kind of the existing bank side development that's kind of along Jericho Street. These properties are on West and over to Kedron Church Road. The landage plan would support medium to S C, single-family residential development. Surrounding zoning is R3 in town and REM in the county. This proposed PRD is for the 249 lot, single-family residential development. This would basically be additional phases of the existing bank side development. Access would be from the existing bank side development via three locations, as well as a new connection, rebuilding of the Kedron Church Road. I did attach the plan book. The request has been amended to be in compliance with the proposed changes to the zoning orders regarding open space and amenities, which heads on your agenda for first reading of the night. And the developer has chosen to require a 35-foot front setback with a double-wood driveway for onsite parking for each lot. Again, the planning commission as part of this did recommend the annexation, which you just added on as well. The planning commission did recommend approval unanimously with several conditions, traffic study. Originally, the condition was to submit a traffic study, and we did receive that on Thursday, and that is under review, so we haven't received the traffic study. We had asked them to show details on the proposed realignment of the Rocky Fork Amble Road and Kedron Church Road intersection. They stated that would be coming with the construction plans. Adequate airflow is unavailable from CUD at this time, however, an upgrade is underway to meet those airflow requirements that could be in place before any other construction. The typical lot and typical setback, needsful detail are inconsistent as to the rear setback. To correct that, both to show is a 20-foot rear setback. And then last one, it's a development standard sheet in the plan book that references three spaces on each side outside the two guardrails. This should be corrected to reflect the current plan. Comments four and five, those conditions, we did receive revised plans on Friday after we sent it to Diane to put in your packet. So those that have already been corrected, comments four and five, and we will certainly get those revised plans to you for your, for next month. And then the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Have you looked at the traffic study?
We have. There are some recommendations on some turn lanes, primarily at the Kedron Church and Rocky Fork Amble Road intersection, when they rebuild that intersection for some turn lane on Rocky Fork Amble Road, as well as coming out of Kedron Church Road.
Obviously, that'll be before second reading. You'll have all that to us.
Yes.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Okay, guys, wake up.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27H, Group G, parcel 14.00, containing approximately 68 1/100ths of an acre. It's requested by Jamie Gonzalez to go from C2 with LSO to C5 with LSO. The property is located at 205 Monroe Street, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
This is a request to rezonate from C2 to C5, both still being a lot of street overlay. It is at 205 Monroe Street, which is about 200 feet of Lowry. Landage plan to support a downtown development here. Surrounding zoning is all C2. The planning commission did review this and did recommend denial unanimously due to the inconsistency of the zoning with the surrounding zoning, as well as the downtown master plan, and if the parcel does not meet the minimum lot size in C5, 1/100th.
Questions or comments? Anything Tim or Mark want to add on this one? I guess that's enough. Okay. Do I have a motion?
A motion that, that we deny this request.
Thank you. A motion to deny, and we have a second. Any discussion?
Do I need to state justification, sir? All four pieces of property around this are zone C two, so the zoning is not consistent with their surrounding zoning?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to deny because of inconsistent zoning with zoning that is around it. Any other discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is, motion passes to deny. Item six, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map twenty-seven P, group B, parcel twenty-nine point zero zero, containing approximately fifty-five one hundredths of an acre. It's requested by Justin Grandstaff to go from C four to a pud. The property is located at four Hazelwood Drive, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request, a rezoning piece of property is currently zone C four. You all saw this just a few months ago to rezonate to the C four district. Now they would like to rezonate to a P U D, about five hundred feet north of the Eden Springs Road West and Hazelwood Drive intersection there. Land use plan again would support a mixed-use downtown development here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R one, R two, C two, and C three. This proposed P U D is to use the existing assets on the property as a commercial building with C four uses, which is obviously what is already zoned. The request for the pud is to add the allowance for the upstairs to be used as a residence. So you have a mixture of both uses on this same property. Did attach the proposed site plan, and it's been submitted to us for that. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Questions or comments on this one? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map thirty-four, parcel nineteen point zero zero, containing approximately twelve acres. It's requested by Matthew Taylor to go from I three to I one. The property is located at five hundred Wade Harrod Road, and this is a first reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request, it's on Wade, five, five hundred Wade Harrod Road, it's about seven hundred feet west of San Griffin Road. The property also has road signs on San Griffin Road, immediately north of the water tank there. The land use plan would support heavy industrial development here. The surrounding zoning is all I three. The primary motive, motivation for this request is that I three has the most restrictive setbacks in the zoning ordinance, which is a hundred feet front and fifty feet side and rear. And the minimum setbacks in I one are thirty feet front with twenty feet on the side and twenty-five feet on the rear. This parcel is fairly large, it is twelve acres, but it is oddly shaped, and it is surrounded by four small parcels, and it surrounds us like a horseshoe. So this proposed use, proposed use is allowed in both zones, that's not an issue. What this would need to be, for you, it's really just those setbacks, and kind of with that odd shape, and the two road signs just allow them to more, to better lay out their property and to build the buildings proposed there. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval unanimously.
Questions or comments for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last item under the planning commission, new business, is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment to protect the smart municipal zoning ordinance to amend Article four, section four, point zero seven, one C, point one zero. Common space and/or directed cross easements in section four, point one seven, zero, development standards, as applied to multifamily dwellings. This is a first reading. Kevin?
Mayor Council, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance in two different places, both very similar wording in both. Basically would apply to any, any pud where there is a residential element to it, and then any multifamily development regardless of the zoning. Basically would amend the zoning ordinance regarding common open space and amenity requirements for all, for all those developments. These are, as we discussed at the joint council planning commission workshop on September twenty-third. This would eliminate the current requirements for amenity improvements and create a requirement that at least fifteen percent of the gross acres of a development is required to be set aside as common open space. And that at least thirty percent of the required acreage must be suitably improved to be usable by the residents of the development. We also, as a part of this, we had recommended kind of clean up some of the requirements we have regarding bus stops in these type of developments. Reflect how they really have been administered and used in the last ten or so years. So it was kind of wasn't practical to require all that's currently in the ordinance, so. Did include that text as, as we had recommended to the planning commission. The planning commission did recommend that to you unanimously.
Questions for Kevin on this? Not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Golly. Okay, have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thanks, Kevin. I will say, if you're planning on running for, as you're a young person wanting to get involved in politics and all, make sure you study your Roman numerals. You need it for going over the agenda. Item B, package liquor board reports. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. Item C is appointment of one new member to the arts commission to serve a two-year term ending in twenty twenty-one. And Raquel, do you have a nomination? I was trying to go back and see, I didn't write them all down as to who. Did you have?
I do have a nomination.
Okay, you have a nomination, okay?
John Greve.
John Greve, and I think that's the only one that we have. So, since Mr. Greve was the only application that we have and the only nomination. And Jeff, that's a, that's one by all of us?
Yes.
Okay, by council, okay. All in favor of John Greve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, John, you are now a member of the arts commission, and we will be getting in touch with you to let you know when your term will start. Item D, consideration approval of the naming of the park property at thirty-eight South Lowry Street. Brian, are you taking this one?
I can.
Or is Jimmy taking it? Jimmy? Jimmy, we're glad to have you with us.
He's so quiet sitting over there, wasn't he?
So this is the renaming of the, the old Tyroboro property to become Zama Park after our city, sister city. And so I think you guys probably have a flat of what it kind of looked like for Zama Park down there with our walking areas and our little plazas. And so something we want to do, maybe incorporate some Japanese elements there in this park with some maple trees or some flower and cherry trees, things of that nature. But we would love to recognize our sister city down in there and name this park as Zama Park.
Great. And this did go before the park board?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions for Jimmy on this? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, I think you and I have had a little bit of discussion, but with our sister city kids who's Zama coming in July?
We are working towards a date of July for completion of the park. We're in the phase right now of going out for some estimated pricing, so we get ready to go to bid. You know, this will have a quarter-mile walking track, and it's, it's not really a lot. I mean, it's really a planning more than, than anything, the walking track, and then we'll take care of the irrigation, lighting, and that kind of stuff. The fence is actually already ordered, I'm not sure, has it started to go up yet?
Hopefully Monday.
Hopefully Monday on the fencing between the railroad tracks, so we are moving forward with this project.
Well, and I think something we've all talked about is, it's pretty nice to be able to look through and see Front Street open and we want to keep that.
Visibility from Front Street and Lowry, but then also, you know, build some color and some pop. We, we did have some folks that reached out to me somewhat questioning what we were doing here, and we talked about, you know, that we felt very comfortable that this was keeping with the characteristics of what we're trying to do in the downtown area. And if you think about what the depot district and Front Street kind of represents, the old Smyrna, and then tying into the Zama Park and not only, you know, being able to give some credibility to our sister city program and show some honor to that program. It also will display the new Smyrna with the influence of the Japanese, with Nissan, Topr, Steel Technologies, and so many different businesses that are now in our community. So that's what we're trying to do, is tie those heritages together.
Great, I think it will be perfect, and.
I'd suggest a June thirtieth date, though, not July.
Well, our target will be to try to, to do some sort of a ribbon cutting around the, the children from Zama being here. And that'll be a nice touch.
Well, would Mayor Endo be on that trip, or do we know?
Well, we don't know, but Brian and I had talked about if this was approved to send some sort of letter and letting them know exactly what we're doing. I think when we made the trip over there, we saw how important the connection is and, you know, the trees that we donated. Gosh, I think the first time that we went over there, we planted right there in front of their city hall.
Thirty-year-old tree right there in front of the town hall, city hall.
So, I think they will be very appreciative and really excited about this, so we'll try to get that letter to them.
And we're looking to tie in, you know, in, in verbiage along the trails, some placards or something that outline the, the concept of the sister city and the relationship between Zama and Smyrna over the years. So, we're looking forward to have an educational purpose for the kids, you know, it'd be similar to what we do with the Kus Memorial, where schoolchildren could come and learn and participate in those kind of things. And hopefully build excitement that in the future they could participate in being part of that sister city agreement and, and, you know, doing the, the exchange with the schools. So, pretty excited about what this could do for us.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to item E, consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance number eighteen dash seventeen, adopting the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year budget relative to the general fund and capital projects fund. This is a first reading.
Yes, and as you notice, Rex is not here, he's on vacation. They're pretty straightforward, they're listed for you to see, and if you have any questions about any of this, we can make sure that those are answered by the time we get to the second reading. But it's, it's pretty straightforward, typical end-of-the-year accounting business.
Questions on these? I think we kind of went through these in the.
In the workshop.
Workshop, so. Seeing no questions, do I have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is consideration of resolution authorizing direction to the mayor to make application for the transportation alternative grants to the Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Again, it's in your packet, this is a grant that we would like to go forward with to help us with the connectivity between the residential commercial areas along Old Nashville Highway and Eden Springs Road. I think the total estimated cost of the project's about two point four million dollars. We'd have a maximum match of about twenty percent. So we would ask that the mayor sign that contract and let us go forward with grant funding.
Questions for Brian on this?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with VGS America LLC relative to the exchange of real property. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor Council, as Brian had spoken with the council previously, this is just a, a small area of land exchanged between VGS America and the town. Convey the, what used to be, what was going to be part of Nolan Drive right-of-way connected to Imperial, that would have to go across the tracks. Obviously, we replaced the road there, and we know that the likelihood of that is probably not going to happen, so we would place that back on the tax roll. In exchange, that we would receive, there's a parcel there at the corner of Lake Farm and Nissan that would assist with some of our stormwater needs. Both properties are under twenty-five thousand dollars.
Questions for Jeff or Brian on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Glad to know you're awake down there.
Second, second. Second, second.
Any discussion? Right at the end of the page, too. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, if I could have just a second, this is a really good deal for the town, and it's a property we really need to help us with some of our stormwater issues. But I want to give a little shout-out to Jeff Peach and his staff for working with VGS and also, you know, going through all the, the old plats and finding, this property wasn't easy actually to find descriptions for, especially on the Nolan Drive side. So, I just appreciate how diligent Jeff was and his staff to make this happen for us and be able to do a land exchange and not cost the town money that will help us resolve some issues over on the Lake Farm areas. We have some stormwater issues, just want to show some appreciation for that.
Great. Thanks, Jeff, and your staff. Anything under other?
Nothing tonight.
Good. Statish reports, anything?
You asked Diane first.
Well, I was going to start with you, and then I was going to start with announcements.
Okay, yeah, very quickly, I do have a couple of things I just want to share. And I want to have to lean on the fire chief being here tonight, I tried to call him today and I missed him. Is our burn ban still in place?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I just want to remind everybody, unfortunately, we don't have placards or.
Notes.
Notes to put up on the screen. You know, we're in a transition right now with our video folks, and as you saw my email today, I'm happy to announce we're moving forward with that. But the burn ban is still in place, if you're wanting to burn in the community, make sure that you're talking to the fire department, they'll let you know when permits will be available, so. This is always fun to do. Received a card today, a thank you card, and this is Dear Smyrna Utilities, not sure who to thank, but we were very helpful in resolving some issues with someone at their home, Miss Sandy Reed. And she just wanted to say that the gentleman that we sent out that, that worked with her and some of the questions she had about a billing issue, and we took care of that to no avail, or to supreme avail, I should say, not no avail. But she was very appreciative of that and the utilities, and we do thank Mike Strange and his group. I did get another letter that was forwarded to me, and this is to the outstanding firefighters, police officers, rescue crews, E M T units of the town of Smyrna. And it proceeded to give a definition of Webster's to the word hero. And then they talked about, I want for one to say thank you, that not only meeting that Webster's definition, but making that impression upon their family and the work that these folks do in our community. And I, for one, would like to thank you, you make a difference by helping, you make a difference by serving, you make a difference by engaging and participating in community events. You make a difference by being there when needed. You make a difference by being courageous, you make a difference by being selfless. You are important and appreciated, and thank you very much. And this was sent to us anonymously, actually, to the, to the town offices. So for our police departments here tonight, our fire department, it's always well represented, all the work, and then also for the E M Ts and the rescue crews that are part of our community, just want to say thank you. I did want to mention that we've just completed a very successful car show in Depot Days. I wanted to give a shout-out to our friends at Sima for a great job, especially on the Depot Days, which was their part of. And then I also wanted to represent, or asked, you know, we, we represent the Parks and Rec Department, Jimmy and, and Mike Moss. The police department, the fire department, again for again, just being out there, being great ambassadors to our community. to our community, you know, answering questions, being that smiling face. And I will tell you, Friday night, we had a few bumps in the road. We worked through. Saturday, it was interesting to watch the fire department chase that shade around the truck as the sun went over. It was pretty warm out there. And the police department riding their bicycles and making sure. I will tell you, on the car show, we've had a meeting, and we hope that we're gonna fix some of those miscommunications between the difference in a cruise inn and a car show. Got to be a very strong subject for that night. But I think we've got some of that cleared up, and I apologize to anyone that was inconvenienced. But we hope to next year have a better show and be able to put a little better twist on it. I don't think most of the general public knew there was any hiccups. We did have a few bumps.
Well, they know now, though.
That's okay. We own up to our issues. We will fix those going forward. And Mayor, at this point, that's all I have.
I will say, with the few bumps in the road that you were talking about, that comes along with an event growing and becoming more successful. And I think that's what we're seeing, is people are excited about that event and want to be a part of it. So, I know that any changes that you all make for next year will just be an improvement. So, thanks for meeting on that.
Okay. I was gonna say something similar. The last couple of years, it's pretty much filled up. But it's just now, this year, it filled up before it even started. So, one of the discussions has been trying to find a larger venue. So, for those people that couldn't get in, or thought it was too cramped, or, you know, didn't like the fact they had to stay the whole four hours, or whatever, we're hoping that a larger venue and maybe some other changes can make it so that those people that couldn't participate can. And it only gets bigger from there. So, it's not just changing how it flowed, but potentially adding more space so that we can accommodate more folks.
Ms. Diane, anything tonight? Jeff? Raquel?
I have a couple of things. This is the time we're gonna announce our challenges.
We'll do that afterwards. Okay.
Okay. Also, wanted to say, I participated in the National Night Out with the police department, and that seemed to be very successful. So, glad I could be able to come out for that. And last week, I was one of the judges for the Amazing Shape Competition at Smyrna Primary School. And I think that went really well also. And so was Mr. Jimmy. He was one of the participants. And there were several town of Smyrna employees that participated in that. So, I was excited to see all of us that could come out and support it. And I'd also like to give my condolences to, I don't know if any of you know her, but her name is Ms. Elaine Boe Washington. She has been a teacher at Smyrna Primary for more than 50 years. And she passed away this past week. And so, I'd like to say my condolences to her family.
Bo and I talked together. She was, as she said, a cool cat. That was what her class was called. And her parents and students-
Sustained a lot of lives.
She did. And, you know, kids came back year after year. But the other thing I was noticing was, she stayed in touch with those kids, too. It wasn't just kids coming back to her. So, you don't see teachers staying at the same school that long anymore. So, she was definitely a good one. Shape contest is always fun. I hated I missed it. And we have some, to see some of those children and what they're able to do at that age and the connection they can make is pretty impressive. Lots of good things. HG?
Nothing but light.
Tim?
Nothing.
Steve?
I've got two things. And you may be already speaking. And Chief, I'm sorry I don't have all the details. But I know you're planning an open house, I think, Monday night?
Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday, sorry, Sunday. So, and it's at the firehouse on Enon Springs Road across from the library, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's Sunday, 1, 2-
1, 5.
1 to 5. So, make sure you get out to visit that. Those are always great. They'll let you try on a hat and a suit, and maybe even let you hold the hose. Also, Representative Mike Sparks and I were having a conversation, and he asked me to just kind of give a placeholder that he's planning a town hall with several other individuals related to the opioid crisis coming up hopefully later this month. So, he didn't have dates and times quite nailed down yet, but he wanted me to go ahead and throw it out there so folks can keep an eye out for it. It'll be somewhere here around the Smyrna area. And that's it.
Um, Raquel?
I had coffee with the cops the other morning. Chief, thank you for the invite. I know a lot of people don't get up like us realtors at 7:30, 8 o'clock. Two of those gentlemen, fine gentlemen, are right here. We had shared coffee with them. And we appreciate the job that they do, that you guys do. And just nice to kind of mingle with them and hang out. And I can tell you one thing for sure, there was going to be no crime taking place-
At McDonald's.
-at McDonald's on Library Street that morning. I felt very secure. Thank you, guys, for everything you do. We appreciate you. Had an opportunity to attend the Power of Ten Summit with Mayor Reed, Brian, Mr. Peach, and some others from our staff. And I want to brag on her. She doesn't know I'm going to do this. But there was a panel that day. This room is full of all the mayors and area leaders from the greater Nashville and surrounding county area. Mayor Reed was an invite to speak on that panel. And I can tell you, this young lady works very hard for our community. And she spends a lot of time going to these functions and meetings that the public's probably not aware of. She's just like us. She's part-time, but has a business and family. But she pours herself into this. That's the, I think it's the reason we're seeing a lot of the things that are taking place around Smyrna that we've been begging for and asking for, is because of her direct input and impact, going to these summits and going to these meetings. But she spoke at the summit. She did a very good job. Proud of you. Thank you for doing that. And just wanted to give her some kudos tonight because I know how hard she works. And it's important that we recognize them, too. So, that's all.
Let me add on to that. We go to quite a few events where other cities are represented all across the state. And not just because she's sitting here, but I don't think people in this town realize how great of a mayor she is. And I'm proud to be represented by you when you're wearing these events. I look around at some of the other constituents, and I'm proud that we have the one we have. And I just want to make sure the public realizes that there's probably not a mayor that cares more about their city and the state of Tennessee.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of things. I don't have the slides tonight, so you'll just have to listen to me talk. Friday nights at the outdoor, Fright Nights at the Outdoor Adventure Center will be Friday, October 11th and Saturday, October 12th from 6:00 to 10:00. If you're looking for some spooky fun, Fright Nights is coming to the Outdoor Adventure Center. It is $5 a person. You pay at the door. From 6:00 to 8:00 are the family-friendly hours. And you're invited to dress up in your costume and play games and get candy and come meet the SOAC animals as well. This age is recommended five and up. From 8:00 to 10:00, it becomes the scare hours. Be prepared to learn the true meaning behind Fright Nights with a haunted walk through the building, find your way out of the scream maze, and into the zombie zone. Don't get caught as you pass the lake of fire. And you can contact Courtney at the SOAC center if you have more questions. Halloween in the Park is Saturday-
Steve brought up the burn banner. There's still a lake, still a lake of fire going on.
They have a permit for that.
Halloween in the Park will be-
He looks confused. Like, maybe there isn't one.
Will be Saturday, October 26th from 3:00 to 8:30. If you have not been to this event, I highly recommend. It is one of the best events that we have going on in town. It is at Sharp Springs Park. You can use the SB Drive entrance. There are lots of family fun activities. There are costume contests for all ages. The first contest starts at 3:15 and the last one at 5:45. And they're based on the age divisions. And I will tell you, there is tough, tough competition out there. Mark, would you agree?
I would agree.
Yes, you've judged before.
Yes, I have.
Have y'all? Yeah, it's pretty tough. So, hay rides are $2. The haunted hay rides are also $2. They are free inflatables. A pie-eating contest that Vice Mayor is going to participate in.
Good.
A haunted house, train rides, food vendors, and more than 80 booths, as well as, do we have the corn maze back? Okay, so we got corn planted this year?
We have corn, not cotton.
We have corn, not cotton this year. So, last year, we figured out a little too late that the corn was not planted for the corn maze. But we've gotten that remedied this year. I will tell you, at each one of these booths, these vendors bring candy to pass out to all of the individuals, which, how many would you say? 8,000?
Seven, eight thousand.
Seven, eight thousand people that come. So, it takes the whole community to put this event on. So, thank you for everything you do for that. 2019 Christmas Parade. Our 45th Annual Smyrna Christmas Parade will take place on December the 1st at 2:00 p.m. Folks of all ages will gather along Lowry Street in anticipation of the floats, the bands, the classic cars, the riding clubs, the dancers, and of course, Santa Claus as they come down Lowry Street. You can enter the parade. The last day for entry is Wednesday, November the 27th. You can do that through the town website or calling here at Town Hall. Mapleview Cemetery cleanups, yeah, we've not passed. Fall cleanup dates, October 1st and October through, and October 15th?
Yes.
Or through, yeah. All holiday specially faded, broken, or deteriorated items will be removed on these dates. All items that are removed are discarded. The only way to ensure personal items are not removed and discarded is to take them off prior to the cleaning period and bring them back afterwards. The town is not responsible for anything removed during cleaning. Brian, I think you had something else?
Yes, Mayor, and I apologize. But one of the things I needed to mention tonight, unfortunately, one of our employees, Rebecca Whitley, works at IT. Her father passed away this last week, and it was in Winchester, Tennessee. But I did want to share that. I know that the family would appreciate our prayers and thoughts during this time. As you know, Rebecca's, she does a great job for us, but she deals with some pain issues herself. I've not had a chance to see her face-to-face yet. I did speak with her on the phone for a few minutes today. But I did want to share that and condolences to that family and their loss.
Agreed. Talking about the Christmas parade. Four years ago, we started a program. We wanted to do something to give back to the community, not only just the parade, but to find a way to give back. And we came up with making a donation to the Nourish Food Bank, which used to be the Smyrna Laverne Food Bank. And the first year, we raised 1,800 cans. It was the back of one of the trucks. We were excited. We couldn't believe we'd done it. So, we really started talking to the participants that instead of, there's no fee to get into the parade except for non-perishable food items. It's really turned into a competition for those that are participants in the parade. And there is even a trophy that's given now. Kralik has won it each year that we've had the trophy, and they go after it hard. But I will tell you, the Boy Scouts said they're coming for them this year. So, we'll see what happens. I will tell you, last year, which was four years since we've been doing this, we collected over 23,000 non-perishable food items. And so, this year, Brian and Jeff?
Yes.
Council is challenging you.
Not a problem.
Okay. We will, I don't, we've not come up with what the winner will get. By next time, we'll come up with that. How about that?
Sure. Make it easy on yourself.
Okay. Counsel, are you all up for that, to take the two of them on?
Yes, we volunteer you to take them on.
Oh, no, no, no.
That's what happened last year.
No, this is all of us.
See, now she's not taking a vote. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I just want you to know, Jeff and I have already placed our order, and it'll be picked up tomorrow. That's over 800 cans, so.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, so y'all just, whatever you want to do.
That's okay. We've gotten a box truck that's gonna have to pick up our order.
Now that we already know what you got, let's just have 801.
That was our first order.
I will tell you that Brian and I had a discussion to try to get more people involved. And we are going to call out community members and challenge them to a minimum of 100 cans or 100 non-perishable food items. So, I am calling out Jeff Turner of Turner Machine tonight. I'm calling out former mayor Tony Dover. And I am calling out Mark and Beth Lewis. So, I challenge each of them to a minimum of 100 cans. And next meeting, I will bring back to challenge some others. And Counsel, does anybody else have somebody they want to challenge?
You know, I have already had emphatic responses from the people I've challenged. And two of them are sitting right here on the front row, Sean and Susan. Thank you for giving us the thumbs up and being willing to chime in and donate. Very gracious to, I mean, they answered me right away. I also challenged Mike and Rhonda Allen. And Rhonda, same thing, we're in. I've challenged my office at Parks Realty. They're in. I can't get over how many people are excited and responding to the challenge. It's not, I think they just look for something to do sometimes. And when we remind them, this is something you can do, they're like, yes, of course, why not? So, thank you, guys. And everybody's answered yes so far.
The same for me. My three were excited and just almost honored to be asked. So, I think so many times, it's just making the ask. So, anybody else?
Yeah, you know, I've reached out to Pinnacle. And since we have two in town, Brandon Doyle, Pinnacle on Lowry, and Alan Gogger on the Pinnacle and Sam Ridley.
Great. Anybody else?
Well, I got very excited about this, this challenge. So, I have several to call out.
Great.
Ron Alley and Carpe Artista, Andrea Cork and Breaking Bread, Marquise Martin and Feta University, Beverly Hamlin and First Bank on Lowry, Jenny Williams and Gil's Ace Hardware, and Robert Stevens and Brittany Stevens. So, I'm calling them all out.
There you go.
Well, she ain't messing around.
Ah, she's not. Anybody else?
Yep. I've got several folks. And I just want to make sure that at least my folks know that 100 is the minimum we're requesting. You can bring as many, as much as you would like. So, I've got Representative Mike Sparks, Jerome Dempsey and Dempsey, Dillon Associates, and Jeff Hollingshead with Smyrna Ready Mix.
Great. Okay, anybody else?
I guess I'm the only one left.
Oh, I wasn't gonna call you out, but. And you may be a little late to the game. Do you need to wait till next meeting, or do you have some?
Well, unfortunately, I can do this in a deluxe manner. How's this?
Okay.
The only one that I had time to call was local guitar legend Billy Crane. Of course, he jumped up and he's right into it. The other one I'm calling out right now, okay? This is the entire Sima membership.
Ooh.
Some, you know, they're all out there. And, you know, of course, some of them y'all have already named. But there's a couple of those, too. But, you know, I think that the Sima members are both definitely vested in our community. And I feel sure that we will get a terrific response from the Sima organization.
Well, and we don't have to pick up the phone to call you for you to be involved. If you want to be involved, get in touch with us. We are gonna try to think of, as we see people between now and December 2nd, as we, or we'll pick up the phone and call some as we think of some. But-
Facebook, too.
As well as Facebook, we are keeping a running list of those that we challenge to make sure that we get the food and we get those names marked off. You are welcome to drop that food by here. We will have a storage area between now and December 2nd.
I thought they were gonna store it in your office.
They are.
That's the storage area.
And you know what? I hope it is so full that I cannot even walk in my office, is what I hope. So-
Toprè and kennel.
That's right. And so, and if you need your food picked up, call us. One of us will come by to pick up the food. So-
I wanted to point out, I've made one call already, too. And Mike Hollingshead with Smyrna Ready Mix has already donated 500 cans by the town manager.
Is that part of your 800?
No, it's not. It is not.
Brian, you talked to the food bank.
I did.
I'd like for you to tell why, why we do what we do.
You know, we do this with the parade. And like the mayor said, some 23,000 items last year through the parade. Also, the fire chief and the fire department works on a food drive before Thanksgiving, working with a couple of the schools and some other businesses here in town. Last year, they raised a little over 33,000 with Walmart, the schools, and the fire department themselves. That total contribution to the food bank, what was told to me was, it took them from the holiday season to August of this year in food. That's incredible. So, you know, our goal this year is try to take them holiday to holiday. That's what we'd like to accomplish. You know, we think about sometimes the down-and-out, or the homeless person, or those kind of things. That's not truly the biggest use of the food bank. Many times, we have people in our community that are just needing to stretch it from paycheck to paycheck on a weekly basis. And this is a place that they can go and be able to feed their families. I think they're allowed- I think they're allowed to go three times a year and get assistance with food, and it keeps them from going to the predatory type places that are out there that would like to take the title to their car, or the ring off their finger, or those kind of things to make ends meet. So it's, it's a way for people to, to meet the needs of their family, continue to keep their dignity, and not have to give up what they own. So I, I really applaud what we're doing. It's, it's a lot of fun. We've already made it a lot of fun. It's going to get more fun, trust me. We're, we're excited about this, and it's just a great way for us to give back to the community, and I just thank everybody for getting involved.
Diane, did you get in the minutes that she and Amber are fighting?
No, 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 no.
It's not us. Did you get that in the minutes?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's just one other thing that the town of Smyrna does about neighbor helping neighbor, and it makes me really excited to be able to live in the community that I do, when we're all willing to get out and help, and I like it when you make a phone call and they don't hesitate. They say, absolutely, count me in, and, and that's what we see. I hope other communities will take notice, and maybe they'll help theirs, too.
I have a question that I haven't asked yet, is, are donations of the monetary kind welcomed, and if so, can they be written to Nourish Food Bank?
We can check, we can check on that.
We'll check on that.
We'll check on that, and, and report back.
Okay. Anything else?
Can, um, credit for, if they give cash?
Um...
Well, I want to make sure, I want to make sure we interpret the rules here, because we seem to have a little problem sometimes with interpreting the rules.